Calling to order the regular meeting of Fairfield Planning Commission on July 23, 2025. Ms. Sheen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, of course. Commissioner Kennedy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Present.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Singh.
Here.
And Commissioner Ollie Sullivan.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Matthews, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, please?
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Persons wishing to address the Planning Commission on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, provided that no action may be taken on off agenda items except as authorized by law, off agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the Commission and may be referred to staff. All right. Comments will be accepted in person or via Zoom. Public comment instructions. To speak on an agenda item in person, please complete a speaker's card and give it to the Secretary before the meeting, or at least prior to the time for public comments on that item. When you're joining via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine on your phone to request to speak. You will be called on by name and have three minutes to speak. Okay, now we'll go on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda for June 25.
Thank you. Do you have a motion for a second?
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Now we'll have approval of minutes for the regular planning commission meeting of June 25, 2025. Are there any changes to the minutes of June 25, 2025?
Not from staff.
Nope. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Public comment. This is time for public to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. I'll now open the public comment period. I do not have any speaker cards for public comment, nor is there anybody online, so I will now close the public comment area. Next item, on the agenda is scheduled matters. There is no developer-led scheduled items for this meeting. We will be electing a Chair and Vice Chairman and hearing presentations from RWG staff on SEQA and the Brown Act. So our first item is Item A, the election of Chair and Vice Chair for our Planning Commission meetings. At this time, I'd like the Commission to nominate a candidate for Chairperson of the Planning Commission.
I would like to nominate.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'd like to nominate a Commissioner for the Chairperson.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate George Kennedy, Commissioner Kennedy, as Chairperson.
Thank you. Are there... Commissioner Kennedy has been nominated. Is there any discussion? Second?
Do we need a second?
Do we need a second?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. We'll take a vote?
Public comment.
Public comment? There's nobody here. Is there any discussion? Public comment? None? Closed. Okay. All those in favor? Do you have to take a roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Any opposed?
Are there any opposition?
I didn't hear it, but just to be sure.
At this time, I'd like the Commission to nominate candidates for Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. Is there a nomination?
I'd like to nominate J.C.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing none. Congratulations. Okay, Commissioner Singh has been elected Vice Chair of the Planning Commission for this next year. Thank you. Now, our next item is a presentation by RWG Law regarding the California Environmental Quality Act, known as SEQA, and the Brown Act. Ms. Sheen, do you have any... We'll go ahead and do that.
Good evening, Commissioners. Okay. Great. So this evening, per your request, we're going to have a brief presentation on the Brown Act and conflicts of interest. We're going to hone in on what you need to know for the Planning Commission. I know that all of you have gone through the training through the Planning Commissioners Academy, so you've been well versed in the details of the Brown Act and conflicts of interest, but tonight we'll just go over a few of the highlights. So first of all, this derives from a policy of open government, which comes from the California Constitution, which provides that the people have the right of access to information concerning the conduct of the people's business and therefore the meetings of public bodies and the writings of public officials and agencies shall be open to public scrutiny. This also can be found in the California Government Code, which provides that all meetings of the legislative body of a local agency shall be open and public, and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meetings of the legislative body of a local agency, except as otherwise provided in this chapter. So the first question is, what is a legislative body? As you all probably know, the Planning Commission constitutes a legislative body, as does the City Council and other subordinate boards and commissions that have been created by a formal action of the City Council. It also may include standing committees that have regular meeting schedules, as well as standing committees with continuing subject matter jurisdiction. And when does a meeting occur under the Brown Act? So a meeting occurs when there's a congregation of the majority of the legislative body that meets in the same time and place to hear or discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the agency. So in this context, the Planning Commission, you have seven members, and as such, a majority would be four. So when there's four of you in the chambers, that constitutes a meeting under the Brown Act. And a meeting occurs even when city business is discussed, even when city business is simply being discussed, not just when there's a vote on the matter. And so if you're outside the City Council chambers, you need to be careful that you don't have, you know, a majority of your body congregating and discussing matters within the subject matter of the jurisdiction. So one of the pitfalls to look out for is serial meetings. So what is a serial meeting? Well, it's something that is not permitted under the Brown Act, and it occurs when there's a series of communications. It can be direct or indirect through intermediaries or technology. It occurs when it's employed by a majority, so when a majority of the body has communications, and they discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item of business or potential business of the agency. So this often comes up in the context of social media or emails. So whenever you get emails from staff or from my office, it's very important, and we usually put a reminder right in there not to hit reply all, because by doing so, you may be committing a serial violation of the Brown Act by discussing the matter of whatever is before you outside of the context of a noticed public meeting. So just remember that that discussion must occur publicly, not via email or texts between the members. A few years ago, the legislature enacted AB 992 concerning social media posts, and it took a very stringent view of this. So it's not just a majority, but even two members are now prohibited from using a social media platform to discuss agency business. So that means that officials cannot respond to any communications on social media regarding a public matter that is made, posted, or shared by another member of the same body. And the legislature was very specific in that it indicated that that includes liking, retweeting, or sharing a post. So a word to the wise, you know, stay off social media unless it's like, you know, very personal in nature, you know, cat videos are okay, things like that. But I, as an aside, I used to be on a City Council, and I can tell you, I know there's always an urge to be responsive to people on social media, especially if you see misinformation, but because of the Brown Act, you really have to be careful and not talk about any city business on your social media platforms. So there's two types of serial meetings. There's the hub and spoke, and then the telephone or email chain. And the hub and spoke, as indicated in the image, basically occurs where you're sort of like the nucleus of the information, and you're getting information from other members, and you're understanding what their views are. And then the telephone or email chain is where it's basically like a game of telephone. Do you have a question?
Yes. Just back on the social media for a second. If there's a Fourth of July parade, and you like it, and you're promoting it, that's not a conflict, correct?
Like it on social media? A Fourth of July parade? Well, I guess the question would be, if it's a special event and you're promoting an event within the city, that's usually okay. It's if it's a matter that would come before this body or before the City Council. That's correct. Yes, that would be acceptable.
Can I ask a follow-up? That's probably my... I had that same question, and you might have already answered it, but on the City of Fairfield's LinkedIn page, if they share a lot of things with the community, if you repost that, reshare that, is that okay? Like, just all sorts of things that... Obviously, it's not things coming to City Council or the Planning Commission. It's just like information about what's going on.
I think it would depend on what the content of the communication is that you're sharing. If it's just factual information or informational about events that are coming up, you know, there's a commission meeting or council meeting, please come and attend.
Or grand openings, or...
Things like that.
Fourth of July parade, things like that. Okay.
That would be acceptable, as long as you're not then putting in your opinion on it, and as long as the information you're sharing is not substantive in terms of like taking one side or the other on an issue. If it's purely informational, that should be acceptable.
Thank you.
Very good questions. Okay, so serial meetings are illegal, as I mentioned, but the question often comes up of, well, can you meet with community members or consultants? So you can, but we would advise that you're just, you know, you're very careful, you know, you should ask them not to share other commissioners' views, because they may, if you're meeting with a consultant, for example, they may say, oh, well, you know, such and such Commissioner thinks this about the project. What do you think? Well, then you've got a problem, because... Well, then you've got a problem, because you now know what another commissioner thinks, and it's outside of the context of a public meeting. Also, you should not make any commitments, and make sure your comments are clear and not misinterpreted, and most importantly, I would encourage whoever you're speaking with to come share their views at the public meeting, so then everybody can hear what they have to say, and everyone has the same information. So, meeting with developers is also a big issue that comes before the planning commission, and there's two concerns here. There's the illegal serial meeting, which we talked about already, and then there's the due process concern. Basically, you know, most matters that developers bring before the commission have a public hearing component to it, and because of that, they're entitled to due process. And what that means is that there's a specific record, and all the information has to be on the record so that they have an opportunity to respond to it at the meeting, and that all the commissioners hear the same information. And then, secondly, there's due process in that commissioners should be impartial, and they should not, you should not have your mind made up one way or the other before the public hearing takes place. So, is it okay to speak with developers? We would say that yes, it's okay if it's a general plan amendment, a specific plan zone change, or a zoning standard amendment, because those are items that would apply citywide, and would not be specific to that project. However, you should avoid serial meetings. We would encourage you to bring a staff member with you to the meeting. Certainly, don't make any commitments, but it is okay to ask questions. Don't talk about what other commissioners think. And it's okay to explain the rules upfront with the developer, to say, look, you know, I'm happy to meet with you and listen, but I can't share with you my thoughts, you know, because I want to keep an open mind. And then, finally, if you do meet with a developer, you should then advise staff who you met with, and basically, a summary of the meeting, so that then that information can be added to the staff report, and all the other commissioners will have the benefit of the same information at the public hearing. In contrast, you should not meet with developers about conditional use permits, subdivisions, site development permits, et cetera, because there, those are about specific projects, and due process requires that all information has to be presented at the public hearing, and there's a specific record that is established. So, no evidence can come from outside of that public record. And then, as I mentioned, you have to make sure that you have no appearance of bias against the developer or the project prior to the planning commission deliberations. Next, I'll talk about whether it's okay to talk with community members. Similarly, with developers, it's okay if you speak with community members about general items like general plan amendments, specific plans, zoning changes, zone standard amendments. However, as with the developers, you should not talk with community members about conditional use permits, subdivisions, or site development permits, because I know you may want to, or they may ask you to, but it's really, it's difficult to avoid a discussion, especially because these are issues that are close to home. It may be your neighbors and your friends who are trying to get in your ear a little bit. So, you can explain to them that it's important that their views be shared with the public at the planning commission meeting, and if you do speak with any community members, you should then disclose what you've heard, so that the developer has a chance to respond at the hearing. So, switching gears a little, I want to speak a little about meeting agendas and what can be discussed at a meeting. So, as you know, there is a specific rule about noticing requirements, that notices have to be posted at least 72 hours in advance for regular meetings, and they have to adequately describe the items considered. But what can, what if an item is not posted on the agenda, and it comes up at a meeting through public comment or otherwise? It's important that, you know, that only items that are listed on the posted agenda can be discussed, and you should be careful to avoid a discussion that starts on an agenda item, but then starts to stray onto a topic or an issue that's not on the agenda. And if you would like to continue to discuss that item, we would suggest that you request that it come back in the future, on a future agenda, rather than continue to talk about it at that meeting. And if there are public comments, there are some exceptions about what you can speak about. So, if there's a public comment that you'd like to respond to, you may make a brief response to a public comment. You can ask for clarification of public comments, or, you know, you basically, you can't, you can make brief announcements or request that it go on a future item, on a future report, a future agenda, but you can't engage in discussion among the entire commission based on something that's raised in public comment. Okay, so, the third topic I'd like to talk about this evening is conflicts of interest and when to recuse. So, the Political Reform Act provides that no public official shall make, participate in making, or in any way attempt to use his official position to influence a governmental decision in which he knows or has reason to know that he has a financial interest. So, under the Political Reform Act, there's both recusal and disclosure requirements. The disclosure requirements, I'm not going to talk about tonight. That's about what you have to report on your Form 700. So, tonight, I'll talk about just when you have to recuse or abstain from voting, and that often comes up in the development context. So, the Fair Political Practices Commission, the F P P C, has a basic test for conflicts, and it goes like this. A public official has a disqualifying financial interest in a decision if it meets these requirements. Is it reasonably foreseeable that a governmental decision will have a material financial effect on any of your financial interests that are distinguishable from the public generally? And we'll break that down. These are all terms of art. So, first, we ask, is the public official making, participating, in making, or using, or attempting to use his or her official position to influence a governmental decision? So, when an official makes a decision, the action is more clear-cut, such as voting, appointing, executing a contract. However, it can also involve a decision not to act. For example, a policy, a decision not to adopt a policy, or not to enter into a contract, that's also considered a governmental decision. Next, we ask, are you participating in making a decision, or attempting to use your official position to influence a decision? So, this analysis gets a little bit more difficult. What qualifies as participating in making a decision? That could be when one acts within the authority of their officer position, or advises or makes recommendations to the decision-making, or when one negotiates without significant substantive review with a third party regarding a governmental decision. So, that could be like, even if you're not, say, you decided you're going to recuse yourself from the matter, but then you go to staff and start talking to them. Then, you're considered to be participating in the decision, even if you're not actually voting on it on the dais. Also, attempting to use an official position to influence a decision can occur when one contacts or appears before, or otherwise attempts to influence any member, officer, employee, consultant of the agency, or advocates on behalf of his or her agency to another governmental agency. So, the next question is, what are your economic interests? What do you have an interest in that could lead to a potential conflict? For real property, it has to be real property that is worth at least $2,000. And note that if you lease property that's longer than a month-to-month lease, then that's considered a financial interest as well. It also includes sources of income that is $500 or more in the last 12 months, including nonprofit entities, investments worth $2,000 or more, business interests, and then gifts of over $630 or more from a single source over the last 12 months. And so, tonight, we're going to focus on real property interests, since that's what often comes before the planning commission. So, a real property interest worth at least $2,000 includes property that's owned by you, owned by you and your spouse together, owned by your spouse separately, your dependent child's property, or your interest as a tenant in real property, except for month-to-month. And, so, the F P P C applies a materiality standard for determining whether there's a conflict of interest for real property interests. If it's a direct decision, then it's, like, for example, if your property is subject to a, is the subject of a general plan amendment, a zoning, rezoning, or a permit decision, then it's a direct conflict. That's a very easy question. But it's, there also can be an indirect decision, if the decision could change the development potential, the character, or the use of the property, and the official's property is near the affected property. So, we'll get into that a little bit more in the next slide. So, the F P P C used to have a bright line rule for materiality standards for ownership interest in real property. There was a 500-foot rule, basically. But now, it's a little more nuanced. Under the new rules, there is a presumption that a decision involving property that's within 500 feet of an official's property will have a material impact on the official's interest. Also, there's now a presumption that a decision involving property 1,000 feet or more from the official property's, official's property will not have a material impact on the official's interest. So, if it's under 500 feet, presumption of a conflict; over 1,000 feet, presumption of no conflict. However, both of these presumptions can be rebutted with clear or convincing evidence. So, you may ask, what happens if I live between 500 and 1,000 feet of a project? Well, there, the F P P C has stated that, basically, there's factors that get weighed, and whether the decision creates a conflict depends on these factors. Under these revised regulations, a decision will have a material impact on the official's property interest if it would change the parcel's development potential, the incoming, income-producing potential, the highest and best use, the market value, or if it would change the parcel's character by substantially altering traffic levels, intensity of use, parking view, privacy, noise level, or air quality. So, if you ever have that situation, and by the way, we have, the staff has what are called like these radius maps, so we have all of your, you know, residential and business addresses, and every time we have a project that comes before the commission, we look at your address, and we make sure, okay, where does it fall within that radius? You know, we basically have a circle around your home. Is it less than 500 feet? Is it within 500 to 1,000 feet, or is it more? And once we know how far it is from the project, then we can go through the analysis. So, if you're getting to that point where you're asking questions, that's the point where you would, you should reach out to staff and the city attorney, and we can help you with that.
Yeah, I just, sorry, just quickly wanted to add, we will be very shortly refreshing those conflict of interest maps as well. So, you may be reached out by me, or someone from our city manager's office, just to make sure your 700 forms are up to date.
Thanks. And just because it falls in a certain place on the map doesn't, it's not a black-and-white answer. There have been instances where it really is fact-dependent, where, for example, there was a case where the F P P C advised that a mayor may participate in decisions regarding a pedestrian path that was within 500 feet of her residence, right? Within 500, where there's usually a presumption of a conflict. But in that case, the F P P C advised that it was unlikely that such a small improvement would have a measurable impact on her residence. On the other hand, the F P P C has advised that a council member could not participate in a decision regarding two residential projects that were within 2,500 feet, so about a half mile, and then 1,300 feet, about a quarter mile, of his residence. There, the projects were to develop 500 acres of vacant land, adding approximately 450 new homes to a community, and 450 additional vehicles, traveling on the same access road as the council member. So, there, the F P P C found that the developments would result in substantial change to the character of the council member's property, and influence the property value. And so, accordingly, they found that the financial effect on the interest, on the city council member's interest was reasonably foreseeable, and they could not participate. Finally, as you go through the analysis, there are some exceptions. So, if we find that there is a conflict of interest, the next step is to determine whether any exceptions apply. So, there are, under the code, under the regulations, there is no material financial impact if a decision solely concerns repairs, replacements, or maintenance of existing street, water, sewer, storm drainage, or similar facilities. So, there, you wouldn't need to recuse. There's also no material financial effect if a decision solely concerns a general plan policy decision, because that's citywide, right? Unless it's initiated by the public official. And also, this is a new addition, common areas in common interest developments are now excluded from the definition of real property for purposes of conducting the conflict of interest analysis. Also, there's some exceptions that apply. So, if we find that there is likely a conflict, then another step is that we look at whether it's publicly a general exception, or the legal necessity exception applies. Okay, so, the publicly, public generally exception applies when a significant segment of the public will be affected in the same manner as the public official. For example, if a city is reconsidering its pedestrian master plan, and each council member owns property within 500 feet of a proposed sidewalk improvement, and the plan encompasses a large portion of the city, and 38% of real properties in the jurisdiction are within 500 feet of the proposed sidewalk improvements, there, there is then no evidence that the property of the city council members will experience a disproportionate or unique effect. So, the public generally exception would apply, and then all the council members or commissioners in this case would be able to participate in the decision. And it's basically a mathematical calculation of percentages to determine what constitutes a significant segment of the public. There's also, the second exception that I mentioned, is the legal necessity. This is required where there's not enough members to participate because of the conflicts of interest. So, for example, if there's seven of you, and four of you have conflicts, that means we wouldn't be able to have a majority take a vote. So, then, it would be a random selection process. We basically, literally draw straws. Sometimes, some of my colleagues bring straws with them to meetings, and you kind of draw them, and whoever picks the longest or the shortest, that person is the one that gets to participate. So, it has to be a random, you know, calculation, and then that eliminates the conflict, and then whatever the item is can be heard. So, just to recap, the four-step test for conflict of interest is, will the governmental decision result in a reasonably foreseeable financial effect on one of your financial interests? If yes, is the effect material? And those are the standards that we talked about. If the effect is material, is it the same as it affects the public? That's the public generally. And if it is material, and no exceptions apply, then you may not make, participate in, or use your official position to influence that governmental decision, which means you would need to abstain. And we'll get into what that looks like. So, the bottom line is, if you're already considering materiality So the bottom line is, if you're already considering materiality questions, that's when you would reach out to us and ask for legal assistance. So what happens if you're disqualified? So when an official has a conflict of interest under the act, that means they can't participate. And so the act actually establishes specific procedures. So immediately prior to consideration of the matter, you would have to identify the financial interest that gives rise to the conflict of interest in sufficient detail so that the public can understand. You don't have to say your exact address. You can just say, I live within X number of feet of the property, and therefore an abstaining. So then you, you would publicly state that you're recusing from the matter, and then you would leave the room until after the disposition of the matter, unless it appears on a consent calendar or other portion of the agenda for uncontested matters. And also, unless you want to speak as a member of the public. So a lot of people often ask me, can I just skip the meeting? Unfortunately, no. You can't avoid the disclosure by just not showing up at the meeting or walking out during that portion of the meeting. You have to go through these disclosure steps. And if you show up late to the meeting, then as, immediately after you arrive, you have to disclose that you have recused yourself. As I mentioned, you can, there's one limited exception for when you can participate, and that's if it's, you're representing yourself with a different hat. You're not a commissioner now. You're, you're basically giving public comment based on your personal interest. And that is a very narrow exception, because it only applies if you own the property or if you own or control the business. You can't simply give public comment, because, you know, it's, it's, you just think it's a good project and you happen to live 500 feet, but you're not going to participate, you're just going to give public comment. No, that, that, that's not going to work. So if you do wish to speak on a matter related to your personal interest, you still have to go through the steps of identifying your financial interest and making sure that that's in the record, recusing yourself, and then going down, you know, stepping off the dais, and then you can go into where the public sits and can come up for public comment. And you are also allowed to stay and listen to what other people giving public comment have to say. So the public, the, the Political Reform Act is really important, and there's severe penalties that can be applied. They can range from an invalidation of the decision before the commission. A member can be liable for a misdemeanor, which could also result in the loss of serving in the office of, as a commissioner. The FPPC can impose fines. You can also be responsible for attorney's fees, and not to mention, of course, embarrassment, both political and personal. So how do you avoid these problems? Make sure you talk to your legal counsel ahead of time. If it's a tricky legal issue and we can't quite give you a yes or no, it is also possible that you can seek advice from the FPPC. Sometimes, if it's a very significant issue, a city attorney may write a letter on behalf of the city to the FPPC, seeking an advice letter. That process does take time. It takes at least 30 days for the FPPC to provide a response. There's also an advice line you can call, the 1-800 number. And then finally, if in doubt, if it's, you know, you're just too close to the meeting to really do the analysis, if you think there's a possibility of a conflict, it's always better to just sit it out and not participate. Because remember, these rules are not about whether or not there's an actual conflict, but it's more about what, whether there's an appearance of a conflict. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, commissioners. Any questions? See none?
All right. Thank you. I'm going to now turn it over to my colleague, Christian Petrangelo, who's going to speak with you about CEQA.
Okay. Thank you, Lori, and good evening, commissioners. So I'll be speaking about the California Environmental Equality Act or CEQA, which you see come before this body quite often. I'm going to be breaking down the presentation into eight main areas, a quick overview, and then the core being like the three-step process that we apply to CEQA. Exemptions are, I'll kind of carve out some time for exemptions, because they play a big role in the CEQA analysis. Also, the types of environmental impact reports that you may come across, the mandatory components of an EIR, when to begin CEQA review, which will depend on whether, what kind of project it is, the project description, which we have a couple of case studies to kind of give you some context on that, project approval, and then I'll just finish it up with some aspects of streamlining. So for, just some basic part of the overview here, CEQA requires that the public and decision-makers be fully informed of the environmental consequences prior to project approval. So the big thing here is being informed, and I'll cover this throughout the presentation, but it, you know, there can be environmental impacts, and a project can move forward, but as long as certain things happen. But there has to be, you know, information put out to the public, so everyone's aware of what's going on. And this has to include that all feasible mitigation measures be imposed in an enforceable The, let's see here. And so for, so a project, as I mentioned, can be approved. It can be approved despite any adverse impacts that can't be fully or even partially mitigated. But this is only if the EIR is prepared and a statement of overriding consideration is adopted after adopting all feasible mitigation measures. And when you're looking at CEQA, you'll see a lot of references and involvement from different types of agencies. So you, you have the lead agency or agencies, which they have the principal responsibility for carrying out or approving a project and deciding which CEQA document to prepare. You also have responsible agencies, and they, they basically have some discretionary approval over, or permitting power over the project. And then you have trustee agencies, which in some, with some projects are involved, when there's like natural resources held in trust for the people of the state. And they must be notified of CEQA documents that are relevant to their jurisdiction as So we have the, you know, the overall sort of three-step review process, and the first step is broken down into two parts, so I'll kind of go through both of those. The first step overall is to CEQA apply to the action. The sort of sub-step there first is, is it a project? Is the activity a project? And project has a lengthy definition within the guidelines for CEQA. To give you sort of a brief look at that, it's basically whether, you know, is the action taken directly by a public agency, so like a Public Works project? Is it supported by one or more public agencies? Or often, does it involve the issuance to a person, entity, for like a permit, a license, entitlement? Which we see a lot of those kinds of projects. So you have those, and then is there a potential to impact the environment? And a lot of these, a lot of these terms get kind of fleshed out within the guidelines, but by potential to impact, we mean potential for resulting in either a direct physical change in the environment, or a reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment. And so often, you'll see social-economic issues come up, and those really don't meet this definition unless, like, they do have a direct environmental impact, or indirect, like, it's linked to that environmental impact. And, let's see. So, once you establish if something, if it is a project, you have to look at, there are many, many exemptions that could apply. You have statutory exemptions, you have categorical exemptions. So I'll give just some examples and context on, on both of those, as well as the common sense exemption. So statutory exemptions, there's a list in the Public Resources Code, and a common one you'll see is ministerial actions being exempt under the Public Resources Code. So that comes up a lot. You'll see it in different statutes, different laws, where the state says this type of action is ministerial. That means that the planning commission doesn't have discretion to, to really act on it in a certain way. They have to, like, there's no modifications. So if it's ministerial, then there's a statutory exemption under CEQA for, you know, for, for those kinds of projects. And there are also other, other statutory exemptions, but that's kind of one of the big ones you'll see. Governor Newsom also recently signed SB 131, and that added an additional 11 statutory exemptions, and a new limited scope CEQA review rule for housing projects that narrowly misqualifying for an exemption. So we have a lot of activity legislatively in this area with CEQA. This probably is not even the biggest one. I'll, I'll cover the other one, AB 130, that, that is probably even a bigger, might have even bigger impacts in a way. But 11 statutory exemptions have been added, and that's actually, it was effective June 30th because of the way that it was passed. So just to keep on your radar that these are, not only been passed, but quickly, you know, going into effect. You also have the common sense exemption, which is sort of separate from the statutory and categorical, but we, you see this come up a lot with projects, that the language, let's go pull it up here, the language being, where it can be seen with certainty that there's no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment, then CEQA doesn't apply. So I'm just flagging this one, because it does come up a lot, and it's used relatively often, so you'll see, you'll see that come up with projects. I'm going to go into a bit more detail on categorical exemptions and, and their exceptions. So you have exemptions, categorical exemptions, and you have exceptions to the exemptions. So if your head isn't spinning already, I hope, I hope it is in a minute. And the, the exceptions, I'll actually just, just like quickly, like, give you a sense of the exceptions here, because I'm not going to talk about them in depth, but these would be like, for certain kinds of exemptions, if they're in a sensitive environment, you know, those might be accepted then, like, they wouldn't be exempt anymore. If there are certain kinds of cumulative impacts, if, if there are significant effects, like unusual circumstances, they call them, those would remove the exemption. They also have scenic, you know, scenic highways, if those are involved, hazardous waysites, historical resources. So those are just some of the, those are kind of the main exception, exceptions to the exemptions. And I'm not going to talk a lot about, about those, but just so you're aware that even if something is categorically exempt, there could be an exception that applies to the So I'll flag a few of the commonly-used categorical exemptions, and these are just a few of many that could possibly apply, but I figured, pull out a few of the bigger ones for you. What they call Class 1 are existing facilities. So if the project involves negligible or no expansion of existing, existing or former use, this could be an, a potential exemption if, if that project meets that definition. And we see, you know, a number of things that might fall into that category. You know, for example, they actually do kind of, in the, in the guidelines, provide a little more detail on this, right? So as an example, you know, additions to existing structures that don't exceed, they say 50% of the floor area or 2,500 square feet, whichever is less, or 10,000 square feet of public services or facilities available are, are able to serve the project, and the site is not environmentally sensitive, is an example of that. Demolitions and removal of smallest structures. Whoops, sorry, go back. And there's, there are more examples of that, but I want to kind of give you a sense of what that, of what that could mean. Class 3 is another common, you see this pretty often, that this involves new construction or the conversion of, of small structures. And again, like, this isn't comprehensive, but in a, a sense of like, you see single-family residences, if they're in an urban area, up to single, three single-family residences. So you have a lot of like these housing-related exemptions under new construction. You have the last one there on specific commercial structures. You have a specific, like, specific means, like, they enumerate stores, motels, offices, restaurants, similar structures that don't involve the use of large amounts of hazardous substances. So there are, there are a lot of, especially not surprisingly, housing-related, and in this case, some specific commercial structures that kind of play into these exemptions, into Class 3. Another big one is Class 32 infill, infill exemption, and this, this applies to, you know, basically anything, you know, small site of five acres or less, but in the urban, urban use, urban space, has to be consistent with general plan and zoning. There can't be any value, you know, of habitat for endangered species, threatened species. Has to be adequately served by utilities and services, and there can't be any significant effects, traffic, noise, air quality, water quality. So kind of focusing on the urban, urban space and urban infill, that's another big exemption. And AB 130 also is, involves infill, it's separate from this exemption, but I'll talk a little bit about that. So this was the other big, one of the big bills that Governor Newsom signed recently, that's also effective June 30th. And this creates a totally new exemption for infill residential projects. Again, it's separate from the Class 32 one I just covered, but a project could pursue both, and a project might be better fit for one or the other. I'll just give you a little more context on this. So basically, the CEQA, this exemption applies to qualifying infill, single-unit, multi-unit residential projects, mixed-use projects that have residential, non-residential components that have to meet certain requirements, transitional supportive housing, and then farmworker housing located in certain area. So this, this, it could be, I mean, I guess, a game changer for infill-related projects, because it's very broad. It is separate from the Class 32 categorical exemption, and it basically builds on earlier streamlining statutes, and I'll cover streamlining at the end, to create kind of this near-blanket CEQA exemption for urban infill housing. That has to meet a series of criteria and requirements, but it's still a, a pretty big And, you know, to qualify for the exemption, basically, the housing project has to meet, it's, it's a long list of site and project criteria, size requirements, and, I'm just going to see what to flag. The, and the exemption, I mean, there are, there are a few things it does not require, actually, which, you know, make it even more valuable, or potentially valuable for applicants. So it doesn't require affordable housing. It limits the number of units in the project. It does require proximity to major transit facilities, and for some projects, the payment of prevailing wages, and, and because it's, it's in, like, in the statute, not the guidelines, the regular, the regulations, it doesn't, it isn't subject to these, like, exceptions that I mentioned. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty, like, broad and powerful exemption for projects that are in, be qualified for an infill definition. And just a few more things about it, you know, specified labor standards might apply. There's a consultation process that has to be followed for, for tribes in California, listed tribes. Certain development standards around air quality must be applied if the project's in 500 feet of a freeway. And then, an important one with timing is the Permit Streamlining Act. There's an amendment to that that requires agencies to approve or disapprove the project that relies on this exemption within 30 days of the conclusion of the, of the tribal consultation process. So it's another timeline that you need to be aware of when relying on this, if applicants looking at this exemption applying it. looking at this exemption applying it. So step two, that was, oh, then step one, step two is the initial study. So if no exemption applies, then an initial study is done to determine whether the project might have a significant adverse impact. And once that is done, you kind of go to step three. So that study will show you, you know, will kind of fork into whether, the first bullet here, if there's no substantial evidence that there might not be an adverse impact, a negative declaration is prepared. If there is substantial evidence that there might be an adverse impact, but any such impact can be mitigated to a less than significant level, then a mitigated negative declaration is prepared. If there is substantial evidence that there might be a significant adverse impact, then an environmental impact report must be prepared. So I'll focus most of the rest, this next part, on EIRs, because that's, you know, we see come up quite a bit, and they get very involved. So there's all different kinds of EIRs, which you may have seen these, but like, just to kind of, I'll cut out a few of these to go into more detail. The project EIR is the most common, you see those a lot. You see tiered EIRs, that's a generic term, but you'll, you know, see, like, oh, a project wanting to tier off the general plan EIR, for example. You see a lot of that happening more and more. Planner program EIRs, which are, you know, kind of a higher level, I'll go into those a bit more. Master EIR, focused, staged, and then the Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment, which I will finish, I'll wrap up things with that. Project EIR is the most common type of EIR you'll see, prepared for an individual activity or specific project. They have to analyze all phases of the project through and including operation. Planner program EIRs are going to be, you know, for these larger, broad-brush projects, like a general plan update. For example, they look at the stages in comparison to, sorry. So the future stages are kind of evaluated in comparison to the EIR to determine if additional documentation is required. So this, they're a much higher level, and the level of detail is going to be different than you'll see in a project, a project EIR. Most, I mean, as a general matter, EIRs have to have certain components that are in all of them, and I'll just kind of, we have the big list here, but I'll go into more detail on the project description. That's what, there's a lot of case law on that, so I'll kind of just go into that in a bit more detail. But table of contents or index, brief summary, the description, even an environmental setting or a baseline that has to be used, and then a full discussion of potentially significant environmental impacts. And I won't read these to you, but, you know, you have all these main environmental media that need to be addressed within the EIR, so it's a big list. And you'll have differing degrees of impact, of course, across all these media, but this is what you'd be looking at in terms of the different topic areas. You also have to, EIR has to look at thresholds of significance, growth-inducing impacts, cumulative impacts, the individuals and agencies that are consulted. And as I mentioned before, with, if economic and social effects are usually wrapped in here with environmental, but in themselves, they're not environmental impacts, right? So if they lead to a physical environmental impact, or, you know, foreseeable indirect physical impact, then they can be considered. But on their own, they're not within that scope. So before I get into the project description a bit more, I'll just give you a sense of, like, when does this happen, right? So when does SEQA, like, the process begin? And it really is, it's sort of, you know, this balance of as early as possible, as early as feasible, in the planning process to enable environmental considerations, to influence the program and the design, but it has to be late enough to provide meaningful information for assessment. So you have to, there has to be kind of that middle ground where, you know, it's early enough, like, things haven't been cemented, but then it has to be also late enough to give meaningful assessment. And those are going, like, the context there, you have, it's going to be a bit different if it's a development project or a public project, so, like, just development projects, it'll be when the entitlement application is deemed complete. Public projects, generally when the lead agency decides to undertake the activity. And as I mentioned, like, choosing a precise time involves, it's a balance of various factors, and the key is to commence before actions are taken that limit the choices of alternatives or mitigations. So it's finding that spot where the alternatives haven't been closed off, and you can still kind of deal with the different mitigating measures if needed. So now I'll give you a little more context on the project description, because you'll see this come up a lot, and there's been a lot of litigation around this. So the project includes the whole of the action. It has to be an accurate, stable, and finite project description to be legally defensible. And a general description of the main features is sufficient. So in the Maintain Our Desert Environment case, like, the identity of the tenants was not necessary to identify in the EIR, but, you know, had to be general, like, the main features of the project didn't actually go into that level of, we need to know who the tenants are going to be. So that was something that a court had looked at. And, but it needs to be in plain language and understandable to the public. If it's too detailed, it can lead to confusion, so that's also something that's important. It has to include certain things, precise location boundaries on a map, location on a regional map, the statement of project objectives for the EIR, a general description of the project's technical, economic, and environmental characteristics, and the statement of intended uses of the EIR. So what agencies are using the EIR, and the list of approvals. And isn't all caps, but must be, you know, it has to be accurate and fixed, and this is something, there's been a lot of litigation around, having, you know, a failure, as I mentioned, to provide the public with accurate, stable, finite description of the project. The Washoe Meadows case involved that, I'll be touching on that a little bit more. Minimizing project impacts is a problem. Piecemealing or segmenting is a big problem when things are just pieced out in a way where, oh, like, there's no impact for this part, no impact for this part, this part, but together, like, there's an impact. So piecemealing comes up periodically, where you have to be very careful that everything is considered holistically. Changes in the project, and then looking at kind of the worst-case or impact envelope approach, that was also been found to be insufficient, and I'll talk about this a little bit more in these case studies. So the first one is StopTheMillenniumHollywood.com, and this is from 2019. And basically, this involved the development application for a Capitol Records site in Hollywood. The appellate court overturned the EIR, and this was an example where they found that the project description was not, it wasn't stable and finite enough. And I have this quote here, this is actually from the Washoe Meadows case, but they had these overlapping issues, so, you know, they said in that case that, "The problem with an agency's failure to propose a stable project, it's not confined to the informative quality of the EIR's environmental forecast. Rather, the failure to identify or select any project at all impairs the public's right and ability to participate in the environmental review process." So in this case, essentially, there, the EIR described a mix of different uses, like, this combination, it could be residential, hotel, restaurant, retail, fitness center, there are all these different uses, right? It was 1.7 million square feet. The intent in the EIR was to provide this flexibility, so they said, like, with regard to the proposed arrangement and the density of the land uses, the siting, to give flexibility. And the EIR presented different, it was kind of these conceptual scenarios in the EIR. And the court found that this was, there's a lot of inconsistency, there was like a lack of, like, a failure to describe the siting, the size, the mass, in any kind of uniform way. And, I mean, essentially, that it didn't really describe a building development project at all. It just gave these different scenarios that a developer could cherry pick from. So these, like, concepts, conceptual ideas, none of which could be ultimately constructed, they didn't meet the requirement of a stable or finite proposed project. So the other case I'll touch on here, South the Market Community Action Network, this was, this is kind of, or FyM, this is a good counterpoint, right? So this was San Francisco-based, and from the same year, and, let's see, it was a mixed-use development, 1.8 million square feet of office, retail, so different uses. And this EIR looked at the impacts of these two different schemes, basically. There's an office scheme and a residential scheme. And the petitioner argued that by, you know, evaluating the two options, that the description was not stable and accurate. So kind of like, you know, a different version of what we saw in the previous case, but this actually made all the difference, right? It was these two very defined options, office and residential, and the court concluded that the description was sufficient. They found that it required, had all the information that SEQA required, and they said that the EIR described one project with two options for different allocations of the residential and office units. So the court said, if anything, the EIR carefully articulated two possible, it was two variations, fully disclosed the maximum possible scope of the project, and they concluded that they found that it was an adequate description because it adopted characteristics of one, the ultimate approval adopted characteristics of one of the proposed alternatives. So they found that the public has all the information that it needs to decide between these two different schemes. And so kind of comparing, like, these two now, basically, FyM, the one I just talked about, two clearly defined options that were in the EIR. The Hollywood Millennium, by contrast, proposed development where they had these illustrative scenarios, right? So they weren't defined enough. And there are multiple, like, definitely more than two, multiple scenarios that were discussed of what might be developed. And then the takeaway being that the project EIR has to have, has to be defined enough and analyzed to allow for an informed public participation and decision-making. And the line between providing options and failing to define a project is not razor, like, it's not like they, it's not totally clear between the two cases, but there are some good examples there of what was sufficient for a description and what was not sufficient between those two. It gives some guidance, anyway. It isn't like a clear-line rule, but it gives a lot of guidance. I'm going to give a little bit of context here on approval, like, project approval and the role of the planning commission. So for negative declarations and mitigated negative declarations, the advisory body, in this case, the planning commission, has to consider the proposed negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration prior to making its recommendation to the council. And then, the council, as a decision-making body, must consider the ND and MND, along with any comments, before approving the project. When the council then, when it adopts the ND or MND, based on the whole record, it must show that there's no substantial evidence that there'll be a significant impact on the environment, and the ND or MND reflect the agency's independent judgment and analysis. If it's an MND, there also has to be a separate, like, a mitigation monitoring program attached to that. So that's an important, whole separate thing to make sure is involved. And then, there has to be a statement around where the documents that are part of the record are maintained. For the EIR, for approvals, the advisory agencies must also consider the EIR, and the decision-making body or the council must certify the EIR under SEQA. And so they have to just show that it's been completed in compliance with SEQA, that it was presented to the council and reviewed and considered prior to approving, and reflected the independent judgment and analysis of the agency. And a last note on mitigation measures, they have to be fully enforceable to ensure that they are effective. They, as I mentioned just a minute ago, there has to be, like, if mitigation measures are involved, there has to be monitoring or reporting plan, and deferred mitigation is not allowed unless there's a menu of various mitigations that might be required based on future study. And the last topic I'll cover is streamlining, and I'll just give you a bit of, a little bit of background on this. So under SEQA, there are different ways to streamline review. If there are exemptions, which we covered earlier, then, you know, apply and rely on them. The consideration of the types of impacts have been taken into account, unless exceptions apply. The, this often will, can be, there can be reliance on prior documents, like I said. So it could be tiering, tiering off a general plan EIR, for example, or other programmatic EIRs, but that tiering is in itself a kind of streamlining. So that's another example. Under the Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment, under this, basically, it's anything that is under SB 375 affects transit priority projects, this is the last kind of big thing I'll cover. They, there's also streamlined review under SEQA, so if, you know, a transit, I'll give you a quick sense of the definition of what that is, if you don't know, that a transit priority project, it has to contain at least 50% residential use, based on total building square footage, and if the project contains between 26% and 50% residential, a certain floor area ratio, has to have a minimum net density of a certain amount, and be within a one-half mile of a major transit stop or high-quality transit corridor. So it's, you know, this very defined term there, but if it meets that definition, there are a number of things that don't have to be included in the SEQA analysis. And this could be growth-inducing impacts, project-specific or cumulative climate change impacts, regional transportation impacts from automobiles of light-duty trucks, trips from the project, off-site or reduced residential density alternatives to address car or light-duty truck trips from the project, and it can also rely on cumulative analysis from prior But even, so even in streamlining, you have to incorporate all feasible mitigation measures, performance standards from the prior applicable environmental reports to be eligible for the process. There are a number of detailed requirements here on the process, but to flag a few of them, the initial study must look at, you know, identify significant, potentially significant effects. There must have mitigation that avoids or lessens to the less than, less than significant level, all potential impacts that are required to be studied. There needs to be public circulation for not less than 30 days, and prior to adoption of the CEA, the lead agency must consider comments submitted and hold a hearing. And that is, that is it. But let me, if you have any questions, please let me know, I know it's a lot of information. And those are some of the high-level topics there, so.
Thanks, Christian. Commissioners, does anybody have any comments or questions?
I have one question for both of you. Will you be able to share these slides with us?
I think so, right? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No others?
If you don't mind, I have just a few, but you can ask if you have a question, sorry.
I don't have any, thank you.
Okay, I don't have questions, I just want to, thank you so much, Christian. It is so much information coming at you guys, it's decades of law and new laws and new laws. But so, very just Fairfield-specific, I just wanted to emphasize a few things in the world of SEQA. What usually comes before your body are categorical exemptions, that's where Christian kind of started with his presentation. He highlighted some of the common ones we use, he hit it right on the head, a big one that... use. He, he hit it right on the head. A big one that oftentimes you guys will see is the infill exemption. When the parcel is less than five acres, it's surrounded by development. There are no impacts to a handful of the environmental resources and it's consistent with our general plan and zoning. That's kind of an easy checkbox that our city tends to look for. That's usually the first exemption that we look for. And a lot of the projects that come in front of you come with that exemption. The other thing that you're going to see now that we have that new general plan is tiering off of the general plan's EIR. So for example, you guys were just reviewing the campus lane apartments project. I believe it was called Blue Ridge. That project tiered off of our general plan. The general plan evaluated that site for high density residential impacts. And then when the development team came along, they did supplemental studies to really like do project site specific review, and they could tier off of that. So I just want to highlight, that's usually what's going to come in front of you. We don't oftentimes have project specific environmental impact reports because Fairfield has a way of, of viewing and just the way that our community is set up gives us the opportunity to use the different exemptions or tiering methods. But it does happen from time to time. And then in the world of the EIRs that we do have in place, we have a handful of project specific ones, but those projects are under construction. So I won't go too deep or I won't really touch those, but come chat with me if you're interested. But we do have our harder Fairfield specific plan that has an EIR. So that will help development in our downtown area without going through hours and, I shouldn't say hours. Why'd I say hours? That would be amazing. Years, years of environmental review. We have the train station specific plan that also has an EIR. And then of course, as I just mentioned, our general plan. The general plan one won't work for everything and everywhere, but you know, project specific items should be okay. And then the other thing I did just want to highlight is a little bit of a humble brag, I suppose. Our planning team is, has been trained and they have the experience and expertise to do a lot of the SEQA information that was just given to you in-house. Some jurisdictions will contract with environmental consultants. We can do pretty much everything except for EIRs in-house. We, I, I, you know, praise the planning forefathers before me that have passed that information on. So when Christian was talking about initial studies, it's our team that works with the developers and their professionals to review the environmental studies. And then we actually do the initial study. When he had that screen of all the thousands of bullet points, it's the planning team that goes through every one of those items, pairs it with studies, and then does the write-up. And then we file all that paperwork. And with that, I do want to emphasize, you guys are the review body. You are the action body. But it is 100% on staff, the developers, the consultants, the partnership team to, to prepare all those documents, do the analysis, synthesize it to something that is legible and understandable for the general public and this body, and then give it to you guys for recommendation and action. So if we come across a, a big meaty project with a, usually it's when your packets are really long and you're like, wow, why are all these pages of tables and charts in here? That's usually a higher level environmental review. And if that ever comes across your table and you're just like, look, I just want to learn a little more. I have some questions. I want to absorb this better so that when I make my recommendation or, or you make your motion, your decisions, you have that information. We're more than happy to walk you through it. Our planning team does have a lot of that experience. So.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll go on to, we'll go right back to you.
Anyways.
Any others for the director's report?
Yes. I'll keep it very short and sweet. You will be getting a few emails from our office about a couple of upcoming opportunities. So first and foremost, we are getting this commission, City of Fairfield emails. So anything that revolves around your commission duties, you can use Fairfield, an @Fairfield email rather than your personal email. And so in order to get that going, we are requesting that you coordinate with our IT department, very specifically, his name is Edward Esteban. So we'll be reaching out with some information for you to set up some time with him. It should only be about five minutes. Really, he just wants to jump on a, a virtual call with you so he can show you how to log in and how to use the email. And he's available all day Friday, if your Friday is open. We'll be getting this information out to you very quickly. Otherwise, we'll find some time in the next few weeks to make sure that that is available to you. And additionally, you'll also be hearing from myself or someone from our planning team about setting up time if you are interested. It is not required. But if you're interested, I would be happy to sit with you to walk through a, a very substantial project that will be at your next meeting, which is on August 13th, for the villages at Fairfield. So recently, you had Lewis Corporation team here presenting to you the overall villages Fairfield project. You're going to be reviewing a project called Lago Vista, which is single family, multifamily, site specific project. And just knowing there's a lot of complications there, I just want to make sure that I'm available for you all to answer any questions ahead of that meeting. And then lastly, we have had lunch with a handful of you, myself, Dave Zellers and Anna Giles. And so I believe most of you are scheduled to have those lunches over the next couple of weeks. If we haven't reached you, we may be pinging you again. Or if we haven't had the chance to schedule you, we will make sure to do that. And lastly, I'll turn it over to Aiden, if you don't mind. I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I do want to just welcome you to the commission and, and give you opportunity to say hello.
Thank you. Thank you Chair Kennedy as well. First off, I sincerely apologize for being late. I came straight from the airport here. I was sweating bullets trying to get around time. So please forgive me. It will not happen again. I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak a little bit. Thank you for giving me the microphone. I look forward to getting to know all of my fellow commissioners. I previously served on a planning commission, so I have a bit of familiarity, but I'm looking forward to learning from all of you and helping be part of making Fairfield great. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you. We'll continue right down the line. Commissioner Reese?
To getting to know you and working with you on the commission.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes, just wanted to say, welcome Aiden. I am looking forward to working with you on the dais here for the planning commission. And also, I thank you so much for that detailed presentation on SEQA and the Brown Act. SEQA, I think, well, maybe I'm overspeaking here, but across the dais, I believe we all have a strong foundation for SEQA. But the details of exemptions, new, new elements, it can become overwhelming at times. And so it's necessary to have sessions like this to re-energize the SEQA battery so that we are better prepared for the next session. So thank you so much for that presentation and also the Brown Act presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Paul?
All I can say, welcome Aiden to being our colleague. And I'd love to work with you and have more views on, on the city plannings. Thank you.
Commissioner Matthews.
Likewise, welcome. And congratulations to Vice Chair Singh. And North Bay, who I work for is having a jubilee August 9th. And we'd like to encourage anybody that's interested in attending. There'll be over 20 different wineries and eateries that are there with various and sundry delicious items. And so please come if you're able to.
Thank you. Thank you. It's, if you haven't been, it's a great event. I highly recommend going to it. So it'll be great. Couple things, Aiden, welcome. Appreciate it. Number two, one of the things I'd like, and thank you for reelecting me to the chairman's post again for another year. The greatest thing I can ask you is be active in our community. Getting out there and letting people know that you are on the planning commission, if you're going to a grand opening or something. It's very well received by everybody because they're, they get excited, these businesses especially that are, you know, putting their life savings, you know, into Fairfield. And it's great if we're there to encourage them and, and be there to support them and let them know that. So I try to get to a lot of them. I get the most of them. But please remember that because we are the community and so the more we can encourage it, the better off we all are. The other thing is, it went out this morning, but Assemblywoman Lori Wilson will be having her meet and greet here in, in August. And if you'd like a private meeting with her, a one-on-one meeting, it's semi-private, you can go to her website and, and sign up for that. But it's, it's something she's been doing since she was elected. So if you have any questions with state law or, or the community, it's a great, great place to be able to, to meet, meet with her. And other than that, I have nothing more to say. So with that, we will adjourn until August 13th. Thank you, everybody.